All right, standing room only. That's fantastic. Welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. We have a lot to cover tonight. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We have all trustees present, and I believe we have, do we all four students as well?
We do.
All right, fantastic. We always begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand and join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we do recog- I'm in between microphones here. She doesn't like me. I'll move to this one. Before we begin with recognition, we're actually going to rearrange a little bit. We have at least a couple of our student reps who would like to see the women's basketball game, I believe. So I'm going to have all four of our student reps do their reports, and then if you'd like to stay, you can stay. If you want to run off to the game, you can run off to the game. How's that sound? So Marlene, how about for you? Would you like to start us, and we'll find out what's going on over at Athens?
So over at Athens, I know the Colts won last Friday, but I'm still extremely proud of all our sports teams. Sports teams, both men's and women's varsity teams for powerlifting, took first place. They hosted regionals at Athens. And we have district semifinals tomorrow for boys' basketball. Bowling is going to states on Friday. Gymnastics is going to regionals over the weekend. And I could go on and on about all the amazing things happening in our sports and our clubs, but obviously, I really just want to focus and reminisce about Charity Week. This year, as you all know, we sponsored Love for a Child, and our grand total this So this was our highest total coming back from COVID and second ever in Athens Charity Week history. We also this year had a match donation from the Grateful Giving Foundation that brought our total to 332,000, or a third of a million dollars. So like every year, Athens went all in, and the energy in the halls was just palpable. From ice skating to Espresso Yourself and Mr. Athens, this is a week that Red Hocks will remember for the rest of their lives. I want to highlight Ryan Walsh, our Mr. Athens winner this year, who raised $21,000. And the whole Mr. Athens program as a whole raised $53,000. And I just want to say thank you and to congratulate everybody in the community. This is really a community effort where one Troy shines, and thank you for making Charity Week 2024 a success.
Jayla Turner, you want to tell us what's going on at Troy High?
So like Marlene started off with, Troy High did in fact win. So we beat Athens. Just as a winter sports recap, we beat Athens 11 times in a row for boys, so pat on the back for us for that. For girls, Diamond Prince set a record for our school, scoring 40 points in one game. The boys have a 21-game streak, and they will also face off against Athens tomorrow at Athens. And the girls are actually playing Athens tonight. That's where we're heading out to. Boys swim, wrestling, boys basketball, girls basketball are all league champs this year. Our coach for boys swim, Mr. Larson, has won Coach of the Year this year. And Drew Oliver qualified for the state finals for skiing. For our activist week, it's our fifth year running it, and we raised $45,000. We're still counting. This year, we ran a lot of new events. It's still very new from us, and we're still recovering from COVID. So I think that this will continue to tread in a positive direction. And also, we would like to give a huge shout out to Smith Middle School, the teachers, the students, especially the web leaders, for raising $5,000 of that during coin stall. We ran it at their school. We also have Footloose coming up this coming weekend, for the next two weekends. And then we also have our senior citizen, Madiné, coming up on the 3rd, where we just reach out to the community and we have them come in for lunch, and they'll hang out with us for a little while, and then they'll be able to see Footloose for free. Our middle school leadership conference is also coming up, where we just let them come in, see kind of what Troy High is about, see our school store, just how we run our leadership classes, see things like peer mediation. So kids who are already leading at the middle schools, just showing them that they can be doing the same thing when they come to our school, and kind of get them the nerves out and just come hang out with us. And that's pretty much going on. That's what's going on at our school.
All right. Thank you, Jayla. Marita, you want to tell- Can't see you down there. There you are. Tell us what's going on at IA East, please.
Of course. Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all having a tremendous Tuesday. This month has been both busy and relaxing at IA East. Last week was our mid-winter break, and students as well as staff enjoyed having the entire week off after various events. On February 9th, House Counsel hosted our very own Snowco Dance. The event featured beautiful balloon decorations that really transformed the school into a winter wonderland. Students from all grades attended the dance and had fun, especially the seniors, as this was their last school dance apart from prom. After Lunar New Year on February 10th, the Southeast and East Asian Student Association had their second annual Lunar New Year celebration. Students celebrated Lunar New Year with traditional foods, decorations, activities, and shows. This year's food included hot pot, dumplings, desserts, spring rolls, kimbap, and more. The week of Valentine's Day was also the week of Winter Olympics and Spirit Week. This year's Spirit Week featured the post-COVID-19 version of Pajama Day, Zoom IRL Day, where students dressed as if they were on a Zoom call with a business casual or professional top and pajama bottoms. House Counsel also organized a pie-in-the-face fundraiser, where students could pie seniors or our amazing principal, Mr. Griffin. This event was very popular, and I am sure that it was the start of a new tradition. At the end of the week, House Ottomus won Winter Olympics and took home the Phoenix Cup. Many students enjoyed our unique Olympics events, such as Duck Duck Goose. And yes, this is the childhood game of Duck Duck Goose, but taken to a high school level, making it very fun to participate in and watch. Tape a Person to the Wall event, where house teams competed to tape a person to the wall the quickest. And a baking competition, where we partnered with the Troy Center so that house teams could use the Troy Center kitchen to see who could bake the most delicious cookies. And lastly, Spanish Honor Society is in full swing with various student-led events. So far, there has been a Valentine's Day event, bingo event, and even an event where students watched Kung Fu Panda in Spanish, learning about the dragon warrior and improving their Spanish comprehension at the same time. And that is all I have with IA East happenings. Thank you.
No pressure, Teagan, none at all. How are things at TCC?
To be honest, we've had a pretty head-down, power-through-the-rest-of-quarter-two kind of last month, quarter two, and a good start to quarter three, just power straight through it. The weather's been getting better, so I feel like everyone's getting a little bit happier with that.
Wait.
All right. For starters, we want to thank the Troy Women's Association for their donation to our prom that we're having. They donated enough money for us to get a photo for the prom, and we are all very grateful for that. We also want to announce 17 students have enrolled for OCC classes, taking 24 different classes. We had a field trip for all underclassmen to go to OCC on January 24th. A lot of them registering, I don't have the exact number of who went and how many registered, but we had a lot registered to take classes next fall. We had our Winter Festival, which was all student-driven and student-planned. We had our end-of-quarter-two Teacher and Student Awards, which were picked by teachers and staff to congratulate students for their high achievements. And then best of all, I think, is Mr. Plus had won Teacher of the Year for the Troy School District. And we did hire a new building sub, Mr. Vanderson, who is loved by all of the students, and we think he's a great addition to the family.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Teagan. Okay, so my student reps, again, you can, obviously, we'd love you, if you want to stay, if you want to go to the game, absolutely. Do what you want to do. Look at that, all stand up and run. Get out fast. Thank you. Yeah, get out while you can. Okay. Okay, we're going to move to recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. The first three items on recognition today include recognition of athletes and coaches. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Fulcher to please come to the microphone. We're going to recognize all state athletes from the Fall of '23, our Athens Boys Soccer State Champions, as well as Coaches of the Year, Andrew Ship and Todd Hugh. Mr. Fulcher, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Majewski, Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize our Fall All-State Athletes, our championship boys soccer team from Athens, and we also have a couple of coaches that we're going to recognize tonight. And I know here we are at the end of February, on a day that seems like spring. Wait for it. It may not seem like spring, but I'm glad that we're able to take this opportunity to recognize these athletes. So I'd like to begin with our Fall All-State Athletes. We have 16 athletes. I believe most of them are here. I'm going to call all of them up. Fall All-State Athletes, when your name is called, please come up. You will get a certificate from Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Ani. You can stay up here with your certificate. Parents, feel free to come up and get some pictures as well. These Fall All-State Athletes are in alphabetical order, and I just want to comment real quick. To be a Division One All-State Athlete in the state of Michigan is quite an accomplishment. These student athletes have put a lot of time and hard work and effort and training behind the scenes, around the clock, that people don't see. A lot of times, all they see are those, see them on the podium, they see the recognition, but what they don't see are those early morning, late hours, weekends, parents driving, parent support. There's a lot that goes into these athletes achieving what they achieve, and it's an incredible achievement. And so congratulations to our 16 student athletes. So again, alphabetical order. Our first is Derek Blackwell, senior from Troy High, part of the boys tennis team, coached by Brian M. Parents can come up, if you want to take a picture, please. And we're going to have, yeah, we're going to have you stay up here, Derek. Come on down. Next up, excuse me, next up we have Mark Delacat, senior from Athens, part of the boys soccer team, coached by Todd Schmidt. Mark is not able to be with us tonight. Next up, we have senior from the Athens Boys Soccer Team, Adam Etheridge.
He's coming.
You want to take a picture. Next up, we have Rentero Gota, senior from the Athens Boys Tennis Team. Next, we have senior from the Troy High Boys Soccer Team, Jack Hots. And Jack is not able to be with us tonight. Next, Prabhat Entery, singles tennis player from the Athens Boys Tennis Team. Next up, we have a sophomore from the Troy High Boys Tennis Team, Derek Kim, doubles. Derek is not with us tonight. Next, we have Eric Kim, senior from the Troy High Boys Tennis Team. Turn the lights on. Eric is not able to be with us tonight either. Next, we have sophomore singles player on the boys tennis team from Troy High, Neil Next up, we have a freshman from the Athens Boys Tennis Team, Rohan Nagaram. Next up, we have a senior from the Troy High Boys Tennis Team, Nish Palapu. Next, we have a senior from the Troy High Cross Country Team, coached by Mike Messina. Mr. Messina is here in the house. Thank you, Coach. Next up, we have a senior from the Troy High Boys Tennis Team, part of the doubles combination, Next up, we have a senior from the Athens Boys Soccer Team, Adriano Shoya. And Adriano is not with us. And finally, last but not least, we have a senior from the Athens Girls Golf Team, coached Okay, how about one more round of applause for our Fall All-State Athletes. Okay, next portion of the recognition, this is something that we don't always get to do because we don't always have a state champion. But once again, in athletics, to have a team state championship at the Division One level in the state of Michigan is impressive. It takes a lot over the course of the season, and everything has to come together, and it did for Athens. The Varsity Boys Soccer Team from Athens High School won the 2023 MHSA Division One Boys Soccer State Championship on November 4th at Grand Ledge High School this past fall. This team finished the year with a record of 20 wins, three losses, and two ties, and they ended their season on an impressive 17-game win streak. The 2023 state championship is the seventh boys soccer state title in Athens' history and part of the 17 MHSA state titles. So we are going to recognize all of the team members. What I'm going to ask the audience, the parents, everybody who's here, the staff from our DEA, I'm going to ask that we hold our applause. I'm going to read each student's name, each student athlete's name, bring them up, and once they're up, we'll give them a rounding applause. So if I could just ask for the applause to be held, and we'll bring each of the boys up. Once again, soccer team, when you come up, you can get a picture, sorry, get a certificate, and then we'll get a group picture with everyone. Parents, if you're here, if you want an individual picture, be quick, but come on up, you're welcome to come up and take that picture. Okay, these students are listed in alphabetical order. We'd like to recognize each one. Most are here with us, I believe, Coach. All right, first up, Emmanuel Ibedo, senior. Next, we have Vash Baxi, senior. Next, Jason Bona, senior. Charles Siak, junior.
Manuel, right over there, bud. Yeah, right there. There you go. That's good.
Travis Claypool, junior. Mark Delacat, junior. Rodrigo Garcia, senior. Brayden Hubman, sophomore. Luke Izzo, senior. Daniel Kadu, sophomore. Dario Kadu, senior. Roshan Khan, junior. Griffin LeBe, senior. Ethan Lu, junior. Nick Luzerai, senior. Alex Marine, senior. Miguel Ramirez Venegas, senior. Ethan Rem, senior. Brady Ross Kelly, sophomore. And Adriano Shoya, senior. Okay, I would also like to introduce the coaching staff. Head coach of the championship team, Mr. Todd Hugh. Assistant coaches, Franco Mancini and Jason Fawcett. JV coach was Nick Watkins. Ninth grade coach was Joey Verhely. Also, we had our goalies coach, Chris Conklin, and then just a program coach, Tim Hickey. Also assisted by our Athens athletic trainer, Brian Troll Baines. Again, it's a team effort, and a championship season is something to be commended.
Big guys to the back.
Shorter in the front, shorter in the front, and scoop back a little bit. Scoop back as far as you can.
Come back to the table, guys. Guys, come back to the table. There you go.
Okay, our next. Our final portion of the athletics portion of the recognition tonight, we'd like to recognize two of our coaches. First up, we'd like to recognize the Troy Athens Tennis Coach, Boys Tennis Coach, Andrew Ship. Andrew, come on up, please. So let me, let me read a quick blurb here for Coach Ship. Troy Athens Boys Tennis Coach Andrew Ship was named Coach of the Year by the Michigan High School Tennis Coaches Association. Coach Ship just completed his 18th year leading Athens varsity tennis. He also coached JV tennis for five years. This is the second time he has received this award. The first was in 2011. Ship most recently led the Red Hawks Boys Tennis Team this fall to an eighth-place finish at the state finals in Midland this past fall. So congratulations, Andrew Ship. But I want to, I want to say also, before we recognize Coach Ship, educational athletics in our school district is part of our educational experience for kids. And it, it is what, what a lot of kids look forward to going to school. Not necessarily math class, I was a math teacher, sorry, math teachers. Not necessarily English class, but athletics. And championships are great. Congrats again, we love to celebrate the wins of the championships, but we're not always about winning. If you noticed, the boys tennis team at Athens didn't win the state championship this year, but I am proud to help recognize Coach Ship for what he's accomplished both on the courts with his team and off the courts with his leadership at Athens, in the county, in our league, and at the state level. So congratulations, Coach Ship. In our last point of recognition with athletics today, we'd like to recognize the Troy Athens Boys Soccer Coach Todd Hugh, who was also named Coach of the Year. So let me, let me just read a little blurb, say a couple words about Coach Hugh. Troy Athens Boys Soccer Coach, Mr. Todd Hugh, was named Coach of the Year by the Michigan High School Soccer Coaches Association. Coach Hugh just completed his 13th season with Athens Soccer. This is the third time he has received this award. The first was in 2002 when he coached at Rochester High School, and the second was in 2019 when he was leading the Athens team. Coach Hugh was also named the Great Lakes Regional Coach of the Year by the United Soccer Coaches Association, and as we just recognized, he most recently led the Red Hawks to an MHSA Division One State Championship this past fall. Coach Hugh is part of a legendary coaching tradition of soccer at Athens High School, which includes two people. Coach Dorch came in and began the programs, and then Coach Hugh came over. And to have only two coaches that, who have led the Athens soccer programs is unheard of in athletics in the state of Michigan, I would, I would say in the nation. So what, what Coach Hugh has done with the soccer programs, leading both the boys and the girls teams, has been phenomenal. As many people know, he has stepped down from coaching, upsetting the players, I know, but, but he is able to impact the entire Athens community in his new role as the athletic coordinator. I'm happy to be able to work with him in that capacity. I know he'll be missed in the coaching ranks, but he is still there at Athens and impacting that community. So Coach Hugh, congratulations and thanks for your leadership.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul Chu. Next up, under recognition, our mission moment. I'd like to ask Mrs. Montanti to the microphone.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Macheski, Board of Education. This evening, we would like to recognize a very special group of students who make up our Superintendent Student Advisory Board Executive Committee. These students led the 54-member SSAB meetings by planning, setting agendas, running meetings, and orchestrating activities and events. This is the second year that we've had an executive board lead the group, and these eight students have done an incredible job. Most recently, they organized and executed our very successful MLK Citywide Celebration and Day of Service. Hundreds of families, families attended the event, and we received overwhelmingly positive feedback. If you were not able to attend the event, we hope you enjoy some of the photos that have been shared on our Facebook page and also in our Friday newsletter. Most people know, have no idea how much time, effort, and organization goes into planning an event of this magnitude. These eight individuals did a wonderful job leading the charge. Could the following members of the executive board please come forward to receive recognition and a small token of our appreciation? Marlene Williams, Anya Shaw, Nareda Albeiz, Kara Crappow, Elise Lazredo, Maz Ali, Nibetita Chandrakhan, and Rachel Azarventham. If anyone would like to share a few words too, after we do certificates, please come up and share a few words about your experience with SSAB. Would anyone want to say a few words about all of your hard work, please? Feel free.
Good afternoon, everyone. So as you know, we are being recognized today for the Martin Luther King Day Junior Event of 2024, and as always, this program was such an incredible success, and it couldn't have been this big of a success without the help of our amazing TSD administrators, namely, Ms. Montanti. Ms. Holmes. And Dr. Macheski. And of course, the entire Board of Education and the hundreds of volunteers we had from Troy High, Athens, and IA East. Especially this wonderful board also did so much work, and we could not have done it without them.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Anya just said. The administrators really helped us bring our vision to life. This whole process really begins in September where we're just starting with like brainstorming these ideas, and they really help us to execute them and to put them into action. So I would just like to give them another round of applause for their continued support.
Thank you, ladies. Congratulations to our Superintendent Student Advisory Board for your work with the MLK Day of Service this year and your continued work as we, as we move forward into the spring. We've got some other great ideas that this group will be, we'd be digging into. So again, thank you. Next, under recognition is our student spotlight. As has become a tradition along with our mission moment, we have an opportunity to acknowledge a student as part of the Creative Guild, and without giving too much away about Jack Kelly, I'm going to let Mr. Butcher introduce Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski, and good evening, Board of Education. Look, up in the sky!
Bird! It's a plane!
No, it's Jack Kelly's drone! We were actually going to fly a drone, but with the big crowd here tonight, we decided it wasn't the best idea. So let's talk about drones. For the average person, a drone might be something of a novelty. We all may have heard a story about someone buying a drone and then right away getting it stuck in a tree. These stories are largely about toys, drones that are kind of cheaper, you know? However, there are many industries where drones serve various applications. Monitoring progress on a construction site, surveilling forest areas with radar to prevent wildfires, assisting law enforcement, our military. I was in Detroit recently before that first Lions playoff game, and I saw a bunch of lights in the sky. It was a drone show, and they were depicting a Detroit Lion with a bunch of drones. And of course, drones are now in the world of filmmaking. Jack Kelly is with me here tonight to share his experience with drones. He is an Athens senior who has competed on the swim team and also as a member of the Athens marching band in the drum line. But what makes him really special, besides the fact that he's the son of a Troy teacher, Jack is a fully licensed and compliant Part 107 remote pilot through the Federal Aviation Administration. We have a lot of students who take a lot of tests, but as far as I know, he's the only one who's taken that one, so congratulations, Jack. The world has changed. My first year of college, I gave a presentation about why drones should be legal. In my last year of college, I had my own part-time job as a licensed drone pilot. And the world continues to change. Jack Kelly, our ace drone pilot, has prepared himself for a world where much of the technology and opportunities don't even exist yet. We are excited to present a new video series that is produced by Mr. Burns and myself, this first installment about Jack Kelly and how he pursues his passions, taking them above and beyond.
Hi, my name is Jack Kelly, AKA Ace. I am a senior at Troy Athens High School, and I am a licensed drone pilot. People ask me to get footage that a lot of people can't. It's a cool thing to be able to have a drone because you can get different shots of specific things that maybe somebody can't if they're on the ground. I've flown drones here and there. I had a little bit of experience, but I definitely got a lot more out of it doing it here. The test itself was pretty interesting. It was the, the first state test I've been able to take, and because of it, I was able to get my license and now I can actually legally get paid for my doing. So we have a drone that is, got four rotors on it. It's very special. It's, can get to different heights and many different spaces. It's quite small, really portable, and really handy to use in certain situations. We also have two other drones as well. They're more FPV drones, which means that we wear them with goggles. That way, they're a little bit more sports-like, I guess you could say. If you're looking for more of an action shot, those are the kind of drones you'd use instead. FPV drones are the more fun drones, I like to say. They can go crazy fast, do flips, go super high, I mean, you name it, they can do it. And the rush that you get from it never gets old. Being able to feel like you're flying a fighter jet is just an amazing opportunity. And, you know, being able to do it with something that is definitely not as expensive as a fighter jet is certainly a purpose, for sure. In terms of pursuing it in the future, I certainly think it's something that is up and coming in the new world. Drone flying is something that not a lot of people have been able to do in the past, and now with all the opportunities and the technology that we're being given, allows for, I guess you could say, new horizons, and drones are going to allow us to do that more often. In terms of going above and beyond, doing drone work is something that not a lot of people have the opportunity to do. So, you know, being able to go over the top and being able to prove what drones can actually do is something that I stand by. So I've always had a dream of and passion of flying, so being able to fly drones for not only the school, but also for several different events throughout the county is something that is really important to me. And being able to do it to the extent where I am, I'm, I'm very happy with it. Knowing that there's plenty of other people in the Film Guild and knowing that I'm able to help them is something that is always a great thing. I love helping people and being able to do that to an extent where it helps them possibly win awards or just on a personal level is just, I mean, what else would you rather have in the future? And honestly, right now, drones are such a huge part of our world, and especially with the license that I've obtained and all the experience that I've gotten being a part of the Film Guild these last three years, I think, I mean, the opportunities are endless. Who knows where it'll go from here?
So of course, we will open to any potential comments and questions from the board, but first, Mr. Jack Kelly, if you'd like to say a few words, it's all yours.
Greetings, Board. I'm Jack Kelly, as you know, and first, I'd like to just say thank you to you guys and Thomas Butcher and Adam Burns, and I can't leave out my wonderful family, and of course, my mother had a shout-out, TSD teacher at fourth grade for Wasps Elementary, so thank you for leaving me too. I, this has been an opportunity that I never thought would happen in my life. It's actually kind of funny, I was walking down the hallway and Burns pulled me into what was supposed to be a classroom, but it didn't look like that at first sight, but um, he got me into it, and before I knew it, I was getting paid for it. So I absolutely love it so much, and there's, I mean, what else can you say? I love what I do, I get paid for it, and I have a great time, so.
That's a good answer.
So Jack, what is the most unusual thing that you have captured with a drone?
Most unusual thing, I would probably say. Well, being able to film inside a newly-built preschool was interesting. I wouldn't usually say it was unusual, but it was definitely not expected. A newly-built preschool, which is amazing, by the way. And for people to have trust in me to not crash in anything and keep it clean is, was just an amazing opportunity. So in terms of what was unusual about it, being able to be given the chance to do that, for sure.
What did you learn from your crashes?
Well, I have only had one crash in my three and a half years of flying. It was at Jimmy John Stadium, funny enough. And honestly, learning from that is mistakes happen, and it just comes down to how you move on from it. A lot of people struggle to move on from stuff because you think of it as being a very expensive drone, and of course it is, but in order to get certain shots that you wouldn't be able to get, like I explained in the video, with certain other pieces of film, you got to be a little risky. And as kind of scary as that is, that's how you're supposed to use drones. And after that first crash, I really started to realize that that's how you're supposed to use them, so.
Great, well said.
So how do you, you know, looking into the, into the future, because you're a senior, how do you think that you're going to be using or flying drones?
So I'm happy to say I'm committed to CMU. Fire up chips! Yes, thank you. And one of the reasons why CMU stuck out to me so much is because they have such a big broadcasting field. They are up and coming with new drone classes and things to get you out of the country to experience different environments, whether it's with drones or just photography in general. So that was, of course, one thing that stuck, stuck out to me. Of course, you can't be tunnel-minded, so there's many other options out there, but as of right now, I think broadcasting is the way to go.
Are you training a replacement? For the school district, are you training us a replacement?
Yes, I am, actually. It's funny that you say that. With me, with my family today is my younger brother, Tommy Kelly. He is up and coming. He has just as much of a passion for this as I do, so I'm happy to say that he is going to be Ace 2.0.
Thanks, Jack. Appreciate you keeping it in the family.
Congratulations again, Jack. The final item of recognition today is actually a two-part. Last time we were together, we had a chance to recognize the Board during the official School Board Recognition Month, but since we had so few individuals in the audience, given it was a bad weather day, we thought we'd carry over the official recognition until today. So Mrs. Montanti, take it away. So Mrs. Montanti, take it away.
Thank you. So obviously, we had a snow day and we couldn't celebrate you all. And so we have some things that we brought today to, hopefully, you will feel the warmth and the love from all of us to you. So normally, it's celebrated in January and postponed due this snow day. But the Troy School District honors and celebrates the trustees of our Board of Education. School Board Appreciation Month is a time to recognize the critical role that Board members play in reinforcing the mission of the Troy School District, ensuring learning for all. We stand before you today with a profound sense of gratitude and appreciation as we celebrate this month. We would like to express our heartfelt thanks and unwavering dedication, tireless service you have provided to our students and our staff. The roles that you play are pivotal in shaping policies, physical stewardship, and support of world-class teaching and learning. Your commitment to fostering and nurturing a conducive learning environment has not only positively impacted lives of our students, but has also created a foundation for success that extends far beyond the classroom, as we've just saw. Your strategic vision, leadership, and dedication in decision-making have played a crucial role in guiding our educational institution toward excellence. Through your collective efforts, we have witnessed advancements in curriculum, infrastructure improvements, and steadfast commitment to the holistic development of every student under your care. In addition to the countless hours spent in Board meetings and deliberations, you have demonstrated genuine concern for the well-being of our students and the growth of our educational institution. Your passion for education is truly inspiring and is reflected in the positive outcomes we see in the achievements of our students. As we express our gratitude during Board Education Appreciation Month, let us acknowledge the impact of your selfless service. On behalf of the entire community, we extend our sincere thanks to each member of the Board. Your commitment to education is a beacon of light, guiding our students toward brighter and more promising future. May this month of appreciation be a reminder of the significant lasting impact you continue to make on the lives you serve. Thank you for everything that you do. And Mr. Butcher and team, why don't you come up? Put together a little video to share with all of you, some of our students that are in the room.
Hardly me, it was all the students.
So the Board of Education does a lot more than just attend these, like, monthly Board meetings. They really build a platform for students to excel and become confident in their abilities. Something I love at the Board of Education meetings is those mission moments where every month, they recognize a new student and they really help students to feel like their work is valued. And it's not just, you know, students who are doing great academically, but all the different co-curricular pursuits of our students. I really appreciate the Board that they're always at our different school events and they come out to see and support our work, but that they also do so much work behind the scenes. That two-hour meeting every month, you know, that goes, hours and hours of planning is packed into that from the Board workshops and just out of their own personal time. And so I really feel like from them, I've learned how to just be a great speaker and a great leader and to really kind of like represent the voice of those around you.
What I've learned from being a Board representative is how unnoticed and unappreciated our School Board actually is. I never knew how much work is done behind the scenes, like even above our superintendents and above like our actual central office staff. But being at the Board meetings made me realize that they're like in charge for getting our, whether it be new technology, new furniture, even like our new teachers, like they approve everything and they make sure that we have everything they need.
Hello, members of the Board. Happy Schoolboard Appreciation Month. Thank you for the opportunity to speak as a representative in this environment, as well as instilling a wisdom and confidence in your future. Thank you for all the advice you've given me for to expect beyond high school, as well as carry myself as a young man to better the community. You all deserve much more than one month of recognition for all the great work you continue to do. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nareda Albiz and over the past few months, I have had the incredible opportunity to work with our Troy Board of Education as the Board's International Academy East Student Representative. Our Board has shown me what it looks like to be a community leader who utilizes their platform to amplify the voices and perspectives of the people they represent. I appreciate our amazing Board for all the passion and hard work they put into their positions around the clock, whether it be at long Board meetings or workshops. Their work has allowed our district to consistently be recognized as one of the best because of the way they take action to address issues and make a positive difference in our community. To all our Board members, on behalf of the entire International Academy East family, happy Schoolboard Appreciation Month and thank you for everything you do.
Wow, that was wonderful. Okay, with that. Thanks, recognition. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess, so you're welcome to stay for all the business of the Board, but if you want to sneak out at this point, have you been here for recognition? This is a perfect time to do that. So we'll reconvene in about five minutes. Thanks. If I could have the crowd quiet down, please? Thank you. Additions and deletions?
There are none this evening.
Thank you. Public communication on agenda items?
There are none on agenda items.
Okay, all right. And then that takes us to number five, the General Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists tonight of A, the minutes of the January 9th, 2024 Board of Education Workshop, minutes of the January 16th, 2024 Board of Education Meeting, C, the Treasurers' Report from December of 2023, D, schools closed to open enrollment, E, schools of choice 105 and 105C, F, the Course Description Book and New Graduation Requirements, G, the Updated Section 1 Resolution, H, district-wide lawn mowing for 2024 through 2026, and I, the Cancellation of the March 9th, 2024 Board of Education Winter Retreat. May I have a resolution, please, Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I on the Consent Agenda.
I have a resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hopt. I already wrote it in beforehand, because I knew you would do that to me. All those, are there any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on the schools of choice. We tend to have a lot of families who will reach out to us asking for exemptions in the school of choice or loopholes in the school of choice. And school of choice is a state-mandated situation. Like the rules that surround school of choice, the Board doesn't have the authority to change the state policy that goes along with that. And so when you want a change in school of choice, I would encourage you to advocate to leaders that are, that are higher in legislative positions. One of the things that people have asked us about is exemptions for people who have to move out of the district but have been a part of the district for a long time because of extenuating circumstances, blended families, things like that. And so that's something that I have been in conversation with different legislators about, like what would it look like to have some loopholes that would allow people who have extenuating situations and have to move. But if you want to advocate, we are not the body that has the authority to make those changes. So you would want to advocate to state legislation. So just wanted to make that point.
Great. Any other comments or questions? I would like to point out that the Updated Section 1 Resolution, that we're not changing our resolution from last year, it's a reinforcement of what we had intended for the Turtle Woods land. And it's, it's really to help Oakland County Parks have an updated resolution for their application for this year. So it's, it's just a restatement of what we confirmed last year. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes. That moves us to page two. Personnel?
There is none this evening.
Thank you. Curriculum?
Likewise, none this evening.
All right, that takes us to Mr. West. And business, we have four items.
Four items for your consideration this evening. The first one, it's worth noting, as we do every meeting, that we had thorough discussion regarding these, these four recommendations. All of them have to do with the bond work, so we are well underway. So this is exciting. The first one is consideration for summer 2024 moving. The RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for professional moving services. Bid responses were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Operations. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. To give a little bit more context, we are, we need to move the furniture of eight schools that are receiving new furniture for the next school year. Those, those buildings are Castello, Hamilton, Leonard, Schroeder, Wasps, and Rattles, as well as Baker Middle School and I East High School. So that's what this moving package is regarding.
All right, thank you, Mr. West. We're being asked to consider the purchase of professional moving services for the summer. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for professional moving services be awarded to Premier Relocations LLC in the amount of $161,200.00. And that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund. Support?
Thank you. Was that Dr. Philip Hart that supported that? A resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Dr. Philip Hart. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Go ahead.
Just a question, what's happening with the old furniture?
That was my question.
So we are in, we attempt to donate this furniture or partner with a school that may be in need. In the past, we've worked with Southfield Schools, Detroit Public Schools. We are looking for those opportunities again to do that. And we will, we'll keep you informed as to how that goes. If not, there will be a disposal method to, to get rid of the furniture.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes.
Next recommendation is for the playground site work. The RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for site work as part of the TSD Elementary Playground's replacement project. Quotes were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and Barton Mallow Builders. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. Again, this is the playground component. I just listed six elementaries, a middle school and a high school for the furniture. The other six elementaries, Barnard, Bemis, and Morse, as well as Hill, Martell, and Troy Union are all getting upgraded playgrounds. So this is the site work associated with that, with those projects. The Board already took action on the actual equipment.
Great. We're being asked to approve site work for our new playgrounds in six elementaries. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Philip Hart?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for playground site work be awarded as follows and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund and the building site and sinking front. For concrete, Albinelli Cement Contractors, $394,700. Earthwork for Barnard, Bemis, and Morse, Delco Services LLC, $633,828. Earthwork for Hill, Martell, and Troy Union, Jaclyn Contracting, for $697,000. Landscape for Delco Services LLC in the amount of $344,153. Asphalt paving, Nagel Paving Company, in the amount of $763,650. For a total bid amount of $2,833,331 with a contingency of $283,333.10 for a total of
Resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Mr. Hopt. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. West on this?
And just to clarify, so we're with, just like with the furniture, we're doing half of the elementary schools this year and then half, we're doing the playgrounds.
That's correct. And then it flips next.
Yes. I have a question, just, just if you can clarify, because 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars of this is earthwork. Can you kind of talk a little bit about what is it that, what's the purpose of the earthwork?
The earthwork is to make room for the new equipment, to level, you know, it's a accessibility, really.
Okay.
Moving, moving dirt, moving earth to accommodate the new design.
So, so that's to, to improve the accessibility of the playgrounds that we have? And is it related to drainage as well, or?
There are some, and when we see opportunities, I don't want to talk too much about the scope because that's more Mr. Carson, but I believe there are opportunities for improvement in drainage areas.
Okay. But primarily, that's to improve the accessibility, so you're meeting our goal there in terms of accessibility. Okay, great, thank you. Do you have a question?
Drainage, but you.
Oh, okay. Any other, it's like we're good there? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes.
Okay. D. C is consideration for Athens High School Stadium turf and Baker Middle School running track replacement projects. The RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for replacement of the synthetic turf in the athletic stadium, Athens High School, and the running track replacement at Baker Middle School. The quotes were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Maintenance and Operations. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. The Board and community should remember, last year, we did the Troy High turf. This year, we're doing Athens. This year, we're also doing the Troy High stadium, or outdoor athletic facilities. We will be, we will be looking at the facilities at Athens as well. We chose this cadence because of the Athens building design as well, and we have to make sure that we understand the scope of that project and where that building will be prior to designing any of the athletic fields over there. So this is just the stadium piece, and then there's opportunity as well to improve the middle school track at Barnard, or I'm sorry, at Bullen Park. So that's what, I'm sorry, Baker. So that's what we're doing here.
Okay, great. We're being asked to consider the purchase of stadium turf for Athens and a new running track for Baker. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Anay?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for Athens stadium turf and Baker track replacement be awarded as follows and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of 2023 Capital Projects Fund and the Building Site and Sinking Fund. For site work, it's Nationwide Sports Construction for $635,250. Synthetic turf for Shaw Integrated and Turf Solutions, Inc. for $528,559. Track surface, AG Sports Surface, $122,200. And then site work for the track, Nagel Paving, for $654,890 with a subtotal of $1,940,899 and a contingency of $116,453 for a total of $2,057,352.
Support?
A resolution by Ms. Anay, supported by Ms. Alish. Are there any questions or comments on this? Just to confirm for the community, the turf surface at Athens will be the same as what we selected for Troy High, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes. On to D.
Last, but certainly not least, however, it is the least exciting.
Kind of least.
It is the least exciting. But it is in the name of safety that we're required to do this. And it is a consideration for the Troy High School Athletics temporary fencing. As we alluded to, we're going to be doing some major work over there to the outdoor athletic facilities, and as such, it's important to keep safety in mind and temporary fencing is going to be required in order to, in order to do that. So an RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for temporary fencing installation at Troy High School as part of the Troy High Athletic Renovation Project. Bid responses were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Maintenance. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below.
Okay, thank you. We're being asked to purchase temporary fencing around the THS Athletics area while construction is taking place. Mr. Hopt?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for temporary fencing be awarded to Fencing Connection in the amount of $92,540 and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund.
Support? Thank you. A resolution by Mr. Hopt, supported by Mr. Hoff, of course. Are there any questions or comments on this one? Go ahead.
So, and just to clarify, this is, we're not purchasing the fencing. This is just for renting the fencing to have it set up by the company, use it, and take over it.
And then I just wanted to clarify, we talked in the workshop, that adding the fencing provides us with particular advantage, which is extending our, the time when we can do the construction?
Correct. Correct.
So this could potentially extend through the school year and that's why it's safer to do that?
Yeah. And in fact, it will.
It will, okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. West. Okay, that takes us to public communication on non-agenda items. We have, do we still have ten?
Correct.
We have ten, okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll go through this, um, in no particular order. I think it's really, unless we sorted them by topic? Did we sort?
No, it's the way they came in.
Okay, so we took, took it the way they came, okay. Um, so we have our giant clock in front of here, so we're not rattling paper in front of you as we go through. So, at, as, um, hopefully everyone's aware, you, you have three minutes to, to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to, uh, explain to the board. It's not a conversation, it's an opportunity for you to, uh, offer comments into the record. Um, if you would like, uh, follow-up, um, just let us know at the end of your time, so that someone can follow up with you after the meeting. Um, and, uh, be polite and be civil. I guess that's, if we can do that, well, that'll be great. Um, I, the first person I have is a Mrs. Janice Boyer.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Majeski on the board. Thank you for having us. Um, I am here to speak as one, a Troy student, a Troy teacher for 26 years, a Troy parent, and a member of our DEA. We have now been working for a month without a contract. Why this is deeply concerning and has raised many of our teachers' anxiety levels, the greater concern is for the future of our district. This used to be the district that teachers interviewed with year, year after year with hopes of becoming part of something truly world-class. Now, we see our teachers leaving for other districts across Metro Detroit and our pool of quality candidates from opening positions in vastly shrinking. To preserve our reputation as a world-class school district, we must retain world-class teachers. To keep world-class teachers, we need a world-class contract. How are teachers supposed to promote our district as a positive working environment when we do not have a working contract? Meanwhile, other districts in the Metro Detroit have a starting salary at almost sixty thousand dollars. How can we expect teachers to work to their full potential when they are constantly unsure of their future? The uncertainty of our future is continuing to weigh our teachers, raising their anxiety and not allowing everyone to reach their full potential. While this situation continues to be a mental and emotional burden for teachers, they continue to show up for their students each and every day. If the goal of this school board is for our district to remain world-class, then world-class teachers and a world-class contract are a must. Our students and our school district's future is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peggy Chinowski? Ms. Peggy Chinowski, please? Peggy, yeah, Peggy?
Yeah.
Good evening.
My name is Peggy Chinowski. I'm a community member, and I'm a proud mom of two Athens alums. Um, it was wonderful to see the district celebrate the amazing teachers and instructional staff through the Teacher Appreciation Program this year. So neat to see you recognize people doing outstanding work. As I represent, these represent the rest of these wonderful teachers, too. They are all doing outstanding work, and it's great that we do recognize them. Today, though, I'd like to shine a light on a different group, a very influential people who do not get the recognition despite having a huge impact to every building in our district, our volunteers. PTOs, PTAs, Atlantic Band and Orchestra boosters raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for our schools every year. All the money pours directly back into the programs themselves and the students. Um, as well as volunteering, untold hundreds of hours provide additional opportunities and supplies for the students and staff of their buildings. From teacher grants to uniform inventories to science nights to carnivals, school picnic, these women and men are quietly providing funds and workforce to make these programs happen. Additionally, each program has major fundraising efforts. Walk-a-thons and auctions have a ton of backstage effort to make them successful. Beyond these visible efforts, the boards of each organization run meetings, meet school administration to assess needs, create balanced budgets, file taxes, and most importantly, translate ideas into actions and programs within the building. Even the presidents of the PTOs and PTAs are generous with their time with each other. They meet quarterly with the district administration to share ideas and support, and make sure that their ideas align with what the districts have. They are also become the voice of the parents to the district administration. So, I'm calling from this board to add volunteer recognition into its annual accolades to recognize the financial and educational impact these volunteers have on TSD. Additionally, please consider acknowledging volunteers with milestone awards for hundreds of, for a hundred hours or something like that within the district. My hope is families seeing TSD publicly valuing these efforts would encourage other adults in our community to continue to join in. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
How are you?
Uh, Mr. Gary Koskinen.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Gary Koskinen. I'm a Troy teacher, a Troy parent, and a Troy resident. The Troy School District has historically been known as a place that you want to get a job. When I started here in 2011, the starting salary was forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The housing market at the time was at a near all-time low, and now subdivisions are being built, offer, houses are being sold with multiple offers over asking price, and currently the starting salary is forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So, in 12 years for a bachelor's degree, it has increased only two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. People, which include my family, have moved into the district for world-class education with world-class educators. But what is it being world-class if we're working without a contract? Attracting new talent and educators bring fresh perspectives, energy, and current teaching practices to the profession. That is happening currently. My daughter has a first-year teacher in kindergarten at Woss Elementary, and she loves her, loves her. She adores the energy, she adores the, um, insight to the educational process. We must consider that educators, both young and old, are seeking employment from other districts and other careers. Uh, with the cost of living increasing exponentially, it's crucial that the Troy School District appeals to our newest hires and pay them accordingly. We need to do better to incentivize our new teachers and to retain the current teachers that you have working for you. If we have high standards to hire teachers, those teachers should be paid accordingly to the standards of what they're getting hired for. Also, retaining teachers promotes stability within these building itself. Uh, if you're constantly hiring new teachers and training new teachers, and you don't get to build that rapport with each other, and you don't get to make the schooling community any better. And if you're spending time training, it's staff members losing out, but most importantly, it's the students in those buildings that are having to meet new people, and people need to, um, learn how the Troy School District works. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Katie Skarn. Katie?
Good evening.
One of my favorite parts of being an adult is an appreciation for having many different perspectives. Tonight, I'd like to offer you a perspective into my reality and the reality of many other phenomenal teachers in Troy. Teachers are usually very humble, often too humble. We don't speak of ourselves, our talents, and accomplishments until we feel that somebody does not see our true worth or understand our value. Typically, we don't speak out even to defend ourselves as we're afraid of retribution from administration, families, and the outside community, as our jobs are often scrutinized by those who've never stood in our shoes or who've been out of our shoes for many years over. I decided to come forth to not only speak for myself and my family, but to speak for many other veteran teachers in this district who gave up years of experience to come teach in one Troy, starting over at step one. In the past, honoring time and steps was unheard of. We understand that, but it is now common practice, except here. We each have personal knowledge of friends and peers who've recently left this district for another and are getting many steps or matched salaries, as is common in every single practice except mine. Eight years ago, I moved back to Michigan to take care of my dying mother. I left behind 11 years of experience in another state. My father, a retired teacher in Rochester, told me to seek a job in Troy, not Rochester, because we paid the most and we had the strongest union. After six interviews, two flights to Michigan, I earned my teaching position in one Troy. I started over on step one and have been slowly crawling my way up the broken ladder that is teaching salaries. In my time in Troy, I've been a keynote speaker at our Welcome Back August kickoff. I've served as a mentor many times. I've been nominated Teacher of the Year three times, and I've worked to earn my second master's degree that I paid for. I've also earned and respect the community of, respect this community, my peers, all while teaching the children of this beautiful community. I am very grateful for my work in Troy. Please do not confuse my frustration with a lack of gratitude, but each day I wake knowing I'm going to work on the pay scale of an eighth-year teacher, when in fact, I offer 19 years of experience. For perspective, this is a difference of over twenty-two thousand dollars a year. I have my own personal children going to college in the near future, and my, my family deserves a mom who earns what I am worth and what I have earned with my 19 years of experience. Those of us who did come from elsewhere, we came with a diverse knowledge of teaching and experience, and we are wondering what you, the board and administration, plan to do to keep us. We are very aware that surrounding districts would love to have us and are willing to pay us for our years of experience. We don't want to leave Troy, but at the end of the day, we all have to do what's best for our family. Please value our time, honor our steps.
Thank you, Katie. Mike DeSantis? Mike?
Good evening.
A little timer going here, too, to make sure. Uh, Mike DeSantis, Troy Athens High School. Uh, there's a marquee in front of Athens High School, digital board, I'm sure you've all seen it driving by. It says 50-year celebration Athens High School, charity week, different dates, times, maybe even early releases, all sworn on a digital board. But something else that's been cycling through that board all school year says bus drivers needed, four thousand dollar signing bonus. Now, we all know there's, there's a shortage in this country, national, in education, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's substitute teachers, parapros, or even classroom teachers. Uh, so you can probably kind of see where this is going. There is a shortage. Um, alone, and myself alone at Athens, I've seen three teachers already leave this school year for various reasons. Um, but, when they leave the profession, um, we haven't really been able to replace them. There's long-term substitute teachers in the classroom, uh, community members, parents in the community. Uh, ask your children, how many of you have a long-term sub in front of you every day? Now, and this is nothing against long-term subs, I know they work hard, they do a good job, but why can't we find certified, qualified teachers to be full-time in that building? Uh, and this is probably something that's going on throughout the district. I don't see this improving. We all know there's a teacher shortage. So, that brings me to why I'm here tonight. I've been teaching in this district for 28 years. Two of my children have gone through Troy schools. My oldest graduated Athens in 2021. Uh, my youngest is actually a senior this year at Athens, uh, and they've had an amazing experience. They have loved it, we have loved it, and it's been wonderful. But on the other end of it, I'm used to not having a contract, which is very strange. It seems every few years, we all have to come to this board and beg or plead, can we please have a contract? Why do we not have a contract? Uh, and as I said, I'm used to it, but that's me, 28-year teacher in Troy schools. Uh, this morning, which really prompted me to come and give this speech here, um, I was talking to a fifth-year teacher at Athens, and she said to me, wow, in my five years here, this is my third time without a contract. And she kind of joked it off, so I guess it's always like this, ha, ha, ha. And I looked at her, not joking, and said, well, welcome to Troy schools. And she said, well, I'm considering looking elsewhere for employment, which is kind of echoing what else is being said here. Please be aware of this. People are thinking of leaving. Now, not 28-year veteran me, I only have a couple of years to go, it wouldn't make sense for me to go somewhere else, but lots of young teachers are considering this. And her quote, I quote her, "Other districts don't seem to, to do this as much. Their teachers have contracts." So, I'm wondering how long it's going to be until the marquee in front of Athens says "Teachers needed, four thousand dollar signing bonus. You can do better, we can all do better. The students and teachers of Troy deserve a fair and equitable contract for the DEA." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mr. Jacob Ritter? Mr. Jacob Ritter? Jacob?
Hello. Good evening.
I didn't see you there. I guess you popped up.
My name is Jacob Ritter, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the incredible educators that have impacted me through my path from Bemis Elementary to Bullen Park Middle School to now being a senior at Troy High. Thank you for your time in letting me speak tonight on why the dedicated, passionate, world-class teachers here in Troy are more than deserving of a fair, safe, equitable, and competitive contract. Troy has recently been deemed the top public middle school in the state of Michigan by U.S. News and World Reports, and that is due to the fact that the district seeks out the top-tier teachers that go above and beyond basic curriculum and standards for myself and all other students that enter the classroom. Teachers like Mr. Latart, who helped every kid, our kindergartner feel important and loved. Ms. Russ, who looked out for the safe pickup of all kids in the afternoon after we got dismissed at Bemis. Teachers like Mr. Kearns, who guided me in one of my first leadership roles in the Safety and Service Squad in fifth grade. Ms. Kebert and Ms. Miley, who showed what true, healthy, and compassionate friendship looks like. Teachers at Bullen, who prepared me for the thriving in high school that I now am kind of living through right now. Like Mr. Leon, with his rigorous and challenging work ethic. Ms. Wright and her passion and love of poetry she shared with us. And Ms. Taylor, with her grace and care for all of our success and happiness. The teachers at Troy High have also left a tremendous impact on myself and others. Teachers like Mr. Larson, who helped to realize the importance of camaraderie and discipline through the Troy High Swim Program. And Mr. Zinda, who instilled a passion for environmental science that I never knew I had. There are so many teachers like the ones I have listed that contribute to students' happiness, well-being, and drive to succeed. It should go without saying that these teachers deserve a contract that reflects the amount of extra time, money, effort, and work they put into students in classrooms year after year. My teachers have supported me in my efforts in academics, along with after-school involvement, being a varsity swimmer, varsity sailor, and former member of the Troy High School Orchestra. Now, it's time for the community and district of Troy to come together to support them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacob. Hi, Mr. Brian Fonstock? Brian?
Good evening.
My name is Brian Fonstock. I'm a 20-year teacher in Troy, teach at Baker Middle School, uh, currently. And, uh, 2019, I had the honor of being one of the keynote speakers at our kickoff, uh, year kickoff at Athens, and it was, uh, really great. And at that time, we were really pushing to become world-class. And in my presentation, I really praised our leadership here in Troy and Dr. Majeski, um, for guiding us in that journey, and I also had talked about how we've been given permission to try new things in our class, and permission to fail, and permission to get rid of stuff that didn't work, and, and I've adopted that in my classroom still to this day. For example, uh, last year, when I was launching our sixth-grade, um, land-use conflict unit in the Amazon Rainforest, one of our students said, hey, can we decorate our classroom like a rainforest? And I thought, okay, try something new, and we did. And three weeks later, we had an interactive Amazon Rainforest exhibit in our classroom that had a working waterfall and embedded QR codes that you could scan and have student research come up. And the kids were so proud of this that they wanted to share it with their families. So, we put together a, a, an open house one night on a Tuesday, and we had 46 families come to see this. Now, the fact that we got middle school kids to willingly be seen with their parents after hours in their school is world-class. I started Pirate Week a few years ago, um, and that has grown, trying something new. We have interactive maps.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Fonstock. I'm a 20-year teacher in Troy, teach at Baker Middle School currently. And 2019, I had the honor of being one of the keynote speakers at our kickoff, year kickoff at Athens, and it was really great. And at that time, we were really pushing to become world-class. And in my presentation, I really praised our leadership here in Troy and Dr. Majeski for guiding us in that journey. And I also talked about how we've been given permission to try new things in our class, and permission to fail, and permission to get rid of stuff that didn't work. And I've adopted that in my classroom still to this day. For example, last year when I was launching our sixth-grade land use conflict unit in the Amazon Rainforest, one of our students said, hey, can we decorate our classroom like a rainforest? And I thought, okay, try something new. And we did. And three weeks later, we had an interactive Amazon Rainforest exhibit in our classroom that had a working waterfall and embedded QR codes that you could scan and have student research come up. And the kids were so proud of this that they wanted to share it with their families. So we put together an open house one night on a Tuesday, and we had 46 families come to see this. Now, the fact that we got middle school kids to willingly be seen with their parents after hours in their school is world-class. I started Pirate Week a few years ago, and that has grown, trying something new. We have interactive maps. Students solve mysteries and go on voyages using map skills that they've learned in our class. And I encourage them to dress as pirates. I myself dress as a pirate and talk like a pirate for an entire week, and I tell you, that is not sustainable for a voice, for my family's sanity when I do that, but I do it because it provides a world-class education for our kids. This year, I got to, I have three really reluctant learners that turned the corner during Pirate Week because they were in and they were engaged, they became captains of their ship. And I got to call their homes and tell their parents that their kids did an amazing job in school. And I had one parent cry on the phone because she hadn't gotten a positive call from a teacher ever from her kid. It was world-class, it was awesome. We started a YouTube channel for our classroom this year, and I have a lot of gray in my beard, that's a very scary thing to do, but I thought, try something new, don't be scared. Having kids show that they're expert by creating content that they want to put out there for the world to see has been amazing. And I, I sent you guys an email today with our link to our classroom YouTube page on there, and I hope that you take some time to look at it, see the world-class things going on in our room. My kids will be mad at me if I didn't remind you that if you like our content, make sure you press that subscribe button, because they watch the subscribers that are on that. You know, I, I talk about all this because I think that shows that with your leadership, we are becoming world-class. I think Troy teachers have done their part to make this district world-class. So I'm asking you, please do your part and give us a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jamie Hallmark a teacher? I've got, in terms of order, I have Jason and then I have Jamie, but Jason, do you want to go last?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, why don't we, I'll, I'll let you go last. So we have Ms. Jamie Hallmark? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I speak to you this evening as a proud 16-year veteran of the Troy School District. I've spent my entire career serving this community. I've been proud to teach Troy through the Great Recession, through the COVID-19 pandemic and remote learning, and now after the passage of Troy's historic bond through an era of renewal and optimism. I'm proud to work alongside a superintendent and central office team who value stakeholders' input, and the dedicated volunteers of our school board who strive to be responsible stewards of our community's resources. This is what I have come to expect from our world-class district, and this is what I'd like our next generation of Troy educators to experience. This year, I've had the privilege of working with an exceptionally talented student teacher from MSU. He's brought innovation, vitality, and a fresh perspective to our classroom. He is also the last candidate in my subject area for at least the next two years from that institution, renowned for its school of education. The teacher shortage is real. Two years ago, when there was a sudden early September opening in my department, the position remained vacant for several months. Just as we were returning to in-person instruction, our school had to hire a private outside company to deliver remote instruction to students. Eventually, we were extremely fortunate, after many months, to recruit a wonderful colleague before she even graduated from college. The teacher shortage is real and has real impact on our ability to deliver world-class instruction. One solution to this complex problem is to offer the most competitive contracts that we can. Troy is losing that competitive edge. On the list of highest average teacher salaries for Michigan school districts, Troy is falling in the rankings, and we are working on an expired contract. We, as my colleagues have mentioned, need to do better to incentivize new teachers, like my talented student teacher, to come seek employment in the Troy School District and remain here. I ask that you bring our contract uncertainty to a swift and equitable resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mr. Jason Chikowitz. Good evening again to you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Chikowitz, and I'm the proud president of the Troy Education Association. I'm here to discuss the teacher contract that expired on Wednesday, January 31st. Last month, I addressed the Troy Board of Education in hopes of preventing the contract expiration from taking place. I ended my remarks with this message to each of you. Troy teachers are committed to doing what is right for our learning community. Troy teachers are committed to doing what is best for our students. The real question is, are each of you? This brings me to where we are today. Your Troy teachers have been working without a contract for 27 days. While other districts like Birmingham, Bloomfield, Novi, and Oak Park pursue world-class agendas by building compensation packages that recruit and retain the best teachers, the Troy School District continues to hoard away historic funding and maintain the second-highest fund equity account in Oakland County. As more and more surrounding contract settlements come in, it is evident Troy is no longer professionally competitive. In fact, Dearborn Public Schools recently announced a new starting salary that is $11,046 higher than Troy's. In addition to this, they also offer a significantly higher ending salary, too. Neighboring districts like Claussen Public Schools have already bargained back the now restored topics, creating workplace stability for these teachers. The opposite is true in Troy, where we continue to see arbitrary and capricious practices from management come into play. Unfortunately, the inability to recruit and retain teachers could not come at a worse time. This year, we are likely going to lose a historic number of veteran teachers to retirement. Additionally, many Troy teachers plan to leave our district at the end of the year in pursuit of higher professional growth elsewhere. Rather than addressing this issue with the long-term solution of creating a competitive compensation package, we will likely see the Troy School District double down on its divisive hiring practices. I am, of course, referring to arbitrarily giving steps to some, but not all, new hires. This ongoing practice continues to create two tiers within one Troy, the haves and the have-nots. The TSD's actions continue to diminish the overall morale of your Troy teachers. Your Troy teachers do not feel valued and respected by this learning organization. As the TEA president, I continue to stand before you with the offer of working together. Your Troy teachers are the foundation of our pillars. We are a people organization. I ask each of you to join us in bargaining a competitive contract that enables Troy to remain the best of the best. Let's be part of the one-team solution that gets this contract settled. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And first, we have consideration of the 2024 MASP Board of Directors election. If you recall in the workshop, we talked about, so we have three candidates, and I think, I think the way we should, we do this is have someone offer a resolution for one of those candidates and then vote?
Yeah, we would just put her, her name in the, in the resolution, right?
So Dr. Philip Hart looks very excited to offer someone, so would you want to?
Be it therefore resolved, the Troy Board of Education hereby casts its ballot for the following candidate, Bridgette McQuiston from Lake Orion Community Schools of Oakland County, to serve on the 2024 Michigan Association of School Boards Board of Directors, representing Region 8 for a three-year term.
We have a resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Dr. Wilson. Are there any questions or comments about that?
I think she's the best fit for, I mean, we know her, she's local.
She's an incumbent.
Yeah, she's the incumbent.
She works really hard.
She's.
I did go to the candidate forum.
Oh, you did?
At the open schools, yes. Evelyn Moudory was there, the Melinda Hines wasn't there, and I listened to both of them, and I agree that Bridgette is, Bridgette is probably the best candidate for that.
Okay, all right, good. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We will cast our vote for Bridgette. All right, and that takes us to other, other. Dr. Wilson, you get to start. Now, you're, you're way down there.
Yes, hi. One, I wanted to thank the community for the amazing support in both Charity and Activist Week. To Peggy's point, the amazing volunteer teams that come in is phenomenal. It's always amazing to me to see the way the teachers and the students really pair up in all of the, the healthy fun competition, but I know that it would never be the success that it is without, without the community. And so I just want to thank everybody for participating in those to make that possible. And then for my colleagues here, last week, I was able to attend a seminar with MASP about Michigan merit curriculum, and so I'm just really excited about all of the flexibility that I see coming in the future. And so I'm just really excited to think about ways that we can be innovative and creative in meeting state standards while also, also pushing, pushing ahead for, for new things that we can do, do for kiddos. So it was a, it was really informative. And so if, if you guys see another one come down, I would encourage you to, to give it time to, if you have time.
Yeah, I saw that at the ALC, and it was, she did a great job.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
On laying it out, yeah.
I.
It makes you immediately think about things that we could do differently.
Yeah, they did record it.
And new opportunities for high schoolers.
Yeah, it's, it should be in the learning portal. So it was one of them that you had to register for, and so, yeah. It was, it was really, really informative. Like, I'm really excited about the things that we can start to.
There's implications there, yeah.
Yeah, there's just, there's a lot of really cool, really cool things that we can do. So, so that's exciting moving forward.
Okay, great. Dr. Philip Hart?
I just want to mention that the Troy Foundation for Educational Excellence, who, you know, is our nonprofit foundation that does amazing things to support education in our district. They award teacher grants, they have done, you know, some very large-scale projects, you know, such as supporting our, our middle school classroom libraries. They are hosting their annual raffle. Raffle tickets will be sold, if any of you are interested. I have tickets with me, they are $10 apiece, and the winner of the raffle wins $1,000 in gift cards. And members of TFEE Board will be selling tickets through, I think, like March 17th or March 18th. So if you're so inclined, again, a great organization, and certainly would appreciate support of their fundraiser.
Great.
Mr. Hart? Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments of Charity Week as well. I feel like every year, I look at the number, and it's just bigger and bigger, and it surprises me how much people can actually raise in this community. So thank you all who have supported that. And I just wanted to thank all the speakers as well tonight for eloquently speaking your mind, so thank you.
Great. Ms. Aleesh?
So I have a couple of things. One is, one of my favorite topics is the school calendar. As always, every week, I get at least one inquiry from a friend or a parent asking, do I at least know when the school year will start in the fall? So I just want to, you know, say is, is, that's being negotiated as part of the contract, you know, at any point, if there's information that can be shared, even if it's just the sort of the, the school year, and then also, as it's being negotiated, to keep in mind that Troy is a really diverse community, and it's, it's about time that our calendar reflects that diversity going into next year. I do want to say it's Election Day, it's going to be one of many this year, so I just generally want to encourage people to, to vote. There's one coming up August 6th, and then the November election, and there's going to be lots of local stuff on all of those elections, so don't forget as summer rolls around. And then the last thing I want to say, I did do some school visits today. I went to Athens High School this morning. I haven't spent that much time in that building since I graduated in 98, so it was kind of fun to, to walk around and to remember where I had, I don't know, chemistry class and Spanish class and all of that. But I think there's a lot of excitement there with the, with the upcoming new construction and build, and, you know, hopefully the, the opportunities that, that will be there for more teacher collaboration space and all of that. And then I also went to TCH. It was my first time visiting there.
Oh, I didn't know you hadn't been there, oh.
So it was, I was really impressed. The environment is so warm. Teagan was there, so I, I got to see him there as well. But it just, it seems like a, just such a great.
Place.
Such a great environment, such a great place, yeah. So I can definitely see why there's been so much movement even there with the graduation rates and everything else. It's just, it, you can feel the, the support and, and, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's it for me.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hart?
Thank you. I had the opportunity and the honor to attend the Baker 7th and 8th Grade Orchestra pre-festival concert on February 15th at, at Baker Middle School. And as you know, and it shouldn't be no secret that I'm a huge supporter of the fine arts, and that is the gateway to a lot of great learning for our students. The students in the 7th and 8th Grade Orchestra played some very difficult pieces. From the last time that I went there in the fall, this time, the orchestra had made such great improvements and had played so well, and it's under the direction of Mrs. Laura Zygus. The 7th and 8th Grade Orchestras will be in competition at Warren Woods Tower High School coming up on February 20th, 29th, and I do wish them well. I don't think they're going to have much of a problem because they play so exceedingly well and very proud. It was quite a large attendance of both parents, friends, and neighbors who attended. And once again, the orchestras played absolutely wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Aleesh?
I have a few. I want to first congratulate all our teachers who are nominated for Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Mr. Flessa, Ms. Davenport, Ms. Newell, and Ms. Hiska.
Hiska, yes.
These teachers truly embody what it means to be Troy teachers with their dedication, talent, and commitment to the profession. They do definitely go above and beyond for our Troy students. I did attend our Section 1 property open house on February 21st, along with the Oakland School, Oakland County Parks, and Six Rivers Conservancy. Had a chance to speak with many residents, I think we had close to 100 people attend. Almost all of them wanted to preserve this as a nature preserve for our future generations, so it was nice to hear that. Most of them were letters of support in our effort for our 2024 grant application. I do want to congratulate and wish all our Asian families and Asian students for their Lunar New Year celebration that happened a week ago. February was Black History Month, is still Black History Month, I'm sorry. So as we lean in on our DEI efforts, we do want to recognize and remind everybody of our own implicit biases and work on addressing them. And then I do want to congratulate Athens and Troy High students for their amazing efforts during their activist week and charity weeks, and their tradition based on community service and activism. Lastly, March, which is two days from now, is Reading Month, so I do want to encourage all of us to go read to our families, to our students, to everybody in school.
Good, nice list, okay. Very, very nice. Dr. Majeski?
Yes, just a couple of things. Usually, most of them are taken, but I want to thank the, about 50-plus families that came out to the preschool this evening to join in our learning activities. These families were able to learn about the importance of play, and many are obviously first time, in many cases, first-time parents. So got to learn about the importance of play and how parents can continue to support their, their youngsters as, as they grow through these very important, this very important period in their life. I want to also give a shout-out to our CAP students that will, that are participating in our CAP program. That's our Career Accelerator Program. There's 29 students, an inaugural group, that is essentially a pre-internship program where students will be placed with businesses around the Troy area. They'll be doing about 20-plus hours of pre-internship work. Again, this is a pilot group, we're looking to expand this as we move into the future. Tomorrow's match day, so think college signing day, so those students are going to be matched with their local business that they'll be working with. So we're excited, we'll be in this room tomorrow at 6 o'clock doing that, so we're excited about that. Want to also mention, we have another community conversation, a Coffee with Superintendent that will be coming up this Thursday at Kirby Coney Island for the community, any community members that would like to attend, or anyone that would wish to attend, at 7:00 PM at the Kirby Coney Island on Crooks here in Troy. I don't know this was, this was mentioned yet, but. I don't know this was, this was mentioned yet, but Troy High kicks off Footloose, the musical, the next two weekends. So next two Fridays, Saturdays and matinees on Sunday. So if you have an interest in, in seeing that, I'm sure it'll be fabulous. If you can go to the Troy High website and go to the Troy Theater Company, and you can get tickets, or I'm sure there'll probably be tickets available at the door as well. So best of luck to our thespians at Troy High School. Monday starts, Monday of next week starts March's Reading Month. I know many of you will be engaged with readers, mystery readers in your rooms. I am looking forward to reading in a, in a number of rooms, as I know many of our board members are. I still have plenty of spots available if anybody would like to reach out. I'm happy to, to join you in your classrooms as we celebrate March's Reading Month. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. All right. I just have a couple of things. Everybody should have one of these, and that's the Troy Youth Assistance Annual Report. We kind of tackled it in a different way, tried to be a little more infographic and really explain what Troy Youth Assistance does by the numbers. So I encourage you to have a look, see, there's two very interesting people on the back page that you might know that are involved in that. But, yeah, we continue to, to work to try to keep our at-risk kids out of the, out of the justice system. The other thing I want to tell you is that we have probably, all of us have seen over the last couple of years, some news stories about Michigan's really shameful behavior around foster kids who are in group homes, and many of them end up with non-accredited school courses. So they will be going to school for high school for three or four years. They will be released into another school district, and a regular school district will say, none of these credits transfer, you're a freshman. And, and that contributes to the fact that, right now, 40% of foster kids in Michigan do not graduate from high school. Because if you're 18 and someone tells you, you just wasted the last four years, you're, you're going to give up and walk away. So a year ago, I was in Lansing, and I spent a day, talked to 12 different senators and representatives, and we were talking about court-appointed special advocate funding. But for each one that was there, I said, we need to fix this, we have to fix this. Will you fix this? And I'm happy to report that Bill 4676 was passed by the House and Senate this week. We expect Governor. Whitmer, I'm like Gretchen, I should be more respectful. Yeah, Governor Whitmer. We expect her to sign it, and that requires that all, all foster students get education that is a Michigan Merit Curriculum. So it probably won't completely solve the problem, but it certainly threatens the funding of any institution that is not teaching kids properly. So I'm happy to report that, just something I know we've talked about as a, as a team, you know, how do, how do you do that? The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I'm, a number of us have talked about, we're really disappointed with the governor's proposed budget of 2.5% increase for public education. It's not even at the rate of inflation. We were really expecting something closer to the 4-plus percent that we got last year. The coffers are full. This is the time to fund K-12 education. So what I would like to do, I'm going to contact David Randalls, and I want to talk to him about setting up some field trips for us to go to Lansing and talk to legislators about, take that, my favorite slide that, that I make Mr. West show all the time, when you correct for inflation, you know, that we're, we're about five grand per student below where we should be compared to 2004. So I want to try to, to encourage the House and the Senate to suggest a funding for K-12 above what the governor suggested. So if any of you are interested in helping me with that little field trip to Lansing, once I get things lined up, I'll let you know. But I want to talk to, to David Randalls because he may suggest a couple other people from other districts and maybe try to arrange this. But the, and it has to happen, if we're going to succeed, it's got to be probably within the next three weeks, because we've got to get it on people's radar before they're really hot and heavy into budget negotiations in April. Okay? So that, so that takes me to, I do have a public statement about negotiations because I don't disagree with anything, really, but most of the, anything, the financial issues that people were talking about when they came to the microphone tonight. But I wanted to, to kind of talk through kind of where we're at and, and encourage people to, to continue to be as patient as you can be. The district and the TEA have been engaged in bargaining for several months, and it's resulted so far in tentative agreement on 18 specific contractual items. The team met most recently for a full day of bargaining on Thursday, February 22nd. We, at the beginning of January, we offered our union leadership, since the beginning of January, we've offered our leadership, 12 different dates to meet, and they've accepted six of those dates. So we are, we are there, we are offering time to negotiate as we go through. Everybody in this room, or most people in this room, know that February 13th was a critical date because there were topics of prohibit, that were prohibited from bargaining that became available for bargaining. And I don't really believe either side thought that we'd be able to reach a settlement until that, those new laws came into effect. So February 14th, beyond being Valentine's Day, was actually a day that kind of settled everything in terms of, you know, what, the landscape, the legal landscape that we have. So I've been encouraged to hear from our team that we have some very productive dialogue around those previously prohibited topics. We also have been waiting on our side, we, for two months, without a response from our TEA to additional contractual language proposals that we provided. So this is negotiations, you know, it's, it's hard as we go through. And, and there's two other, there's two factors that also contributed to our frustration here, and, and it's a shared frustration on both sides of the negotiating table. And that is, if you look at Wayne County and you look at Macomb County, both of those counties have passed countywide millages that are worth over $400 per pupil. In the, in the Troy District, that would give us $5 million extra that we could have applied towards salaries. But Oakland County has not moved in that direction. There's conversation, we're talking to other school boards about trying to, trying to offer a county-wide millage proposal because we know that will help us keep competitive for all of our teachers. But that isn't happening yet. So we're, we're still hopeful. Still a potential that it could end up on the ballot by November, but that isn't money that we have available to us right now. So those are all things that we, you know, we are, are struggling with as we, as we go through. We are painfully aware of the teacher shortage. We are fundamentally committed to, to figuring out a way to keep our, our people competitive. And so I would just ask again for your continued patience. We haven't reached an impasse. We've had, we continue to have productive conversations with both sides of the table. We have sessions scheduled for March 13th, March 19th, April 3rd, April 10th, and April 16th, if we need them. So I'm really happy that both sides have, have locked in five dates that they're ready to go. Obviously, we will be thrilled if we can come to agreement on March 13th, the very first one. But just keep in mind that, that we are committed to a successful agreement. We are committed to career advancement for all our teachers, and we really seek to position the district to attract, retain, and sustain our exceptional workforce. We do value, we're trying to figure out how to do it, and we'll get there. So just, I just ask for all of us to continue to work together, and we'll come up with a solution.
With all due respect, I find it difficult to ask for patience when, and you said that we're painfully aware of the.
Can, let me, let me, because I can't have this conversation within our meeting. So let me end the meeting, and you can talk to me, okay? So that, that's all I have right now. Is there anything that anybody else has for the meeting? Okay, then I'm, are we good? Workshop, that's, I'm sorry. So we will be back in workshop a week from today.
March 5th.
Special meeting?
March 5th. March 5th, sorry. We have the special meeting at 5:00. Yeah, special meeting, closed session at 5:00, and then at 6 o'clock, we have our workshop.
And then board meeting.
Our, you should just say it, yeah. So our board meeting is what the, is.
March 19th.
March 19th, at 7 o'clock back here. Okay. Thank you. Not such a good job, but we did it. Okay.